Mayor Bauer?
Here.
Mayor Purcell, Magdrick?
Here.
Alderman Jones?
Here.
Alderman Welch?
Here.
Alderman Green?
Here.
Alderman Purvis?
Here.
You have a call, ma'am.
Thank you. Let's see, Woody, would you lead us in the pledges?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, where the nation, under God, indivisible, will protect and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, protecting this one state, under God, one, indivisible.
Thank you, Alderman Green.
Almost done.
Okay, next on the agenda is we have a special presentation. Chief Garibay?
Mayor and council, tonight, very pleased to, I'll just bring this wonderful lady, Stephanie Colber, here, come up, please. These folks, Bike the Blue Foundation, and they drove all the way down here from Fort Worth, Texas, today to gift us with something, so I'll let her have the floor.
Thank you. Let me just put this on here, it's okay. My name is Stephanie Colber, and I work Bike the Blue, and I am from Fort Worth, Texas, but our nonprofit is nationwide, so we give bikes to patrol officers across the United States. And I came across Chief Pierce, went down, like, many, many, many years ago, I follow a lot of police officers and chiefs of police, and he had a photo that just really sang to my heart, and it was the one of him jumping in the swimming pool with his hands like this, I don't know if you guys have seen that one or not. But anyway, through the years, or for a while now, we've communicated, and he realized that I gave bikes away, and contacted me about getting bikes for Jamaica Beach Police Department, so that's why I'm here today. We have given a lot of bikes out this year, and this is our last giveaway for the rest of this year, we take a break for a while until after the first of the year, but we have given you guys some Volcanic bikes, which is made just for police officers, they come with the lights, red, white, and blue, and sirens, they have saddlebags, and they're made just for the beach, and they're custom colored for you guys, because he wanted white, most of the time, we don't do that, we just do black, but he wanted white to match, match his cars and everything else, whatever else he has, so these are you guys' new bikes for your bike patrol officers. These bikes run around. These bikes are about thirty-five hundred dollars apiece, so, and then you have to add on your lights, your sirens, your saddlebags, anything else, this right here was extra, because here, he wanted it, the calories for you guys. But these are your Volcanic bikes for y'all to use on the beaches and to use for community policing, and that's why I do this, is because my grandfather was captain of a police department when I was a kid, and I grew up in the police department, back when you could go in and just hang out with your grandfather, you can't do that these days, but in his honor, I have started this four years ago, and on our logo, there is an old-timey, or old retro cap as the C, and it has my grandfather's badge number on it. So that's why I'm here today, I just wanted to give you these bikes, and also would like to thank all the donors that went into doing this, it's a big, huge effort, we just gave ten bikes to the Fort Worth Police Department, ten bikes for the Bedford Police Department, and then you guys, these bikes, so we had to raise a lot of money to do that, and we had some rights supporters, some US Energy, a lot of national supporters, as well as local Fort Worth Police Department area supporters, too. So congratulations, and I wish you the best on your new bike patrol unit, and I'm excited for y'all, can't wait to see all the videos.
Mayor would like to give you a little something as a token of appreciation.
We very much like to thank you, so a small, a small clap, a small token of appreciation for all that you do, and I know our officers are going to be very impactful on these bicycles, both on the beach and in the neighborhood, so we appreciate you back in the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am, and I know that you love t-shirts, and I hear a lot of t-shirts.
Oh, yes.
Can you give them a moment?
Yes, I saw these t-shirts online, and I'm like, can I buy some of those?
Yeah, I got two.
Oh, my gosh, I like that, thank you, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like, officers, we all, real quick, I'm taking a picture with Ms. Colber?
Yes. I also want to thank my board members, I have some board members, and several were trying to get here today, but since it was during the week, they had a hard time getting here, but because it wasn't for my board members, and their support, I mean, it wouldn't happen either, I couldn't do it myself, so.
They went to go get the guy in the shorts.
The guy in the shorts.
In my transporter, he transports all my bikes, right, John? They're lightweight, they're made for police officers, so they, they're very lightweight, so they can do maneuvers.
I want council standing up in the back, please.
Yes, please.
I want y'all in the photo, please.
The chief at Stephanie's, looking for bike patrol maneuvers, and it's very fascinating, they could actually, I'm sure the chief can tell you, they can take people down, use their guns, they can do all kinds of stuff on a bike that you would not believe.
You can dial on one.
All three, y'all, one, two, three. Love it, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Say thank you for driving there. Okay, next on the agenda is public hearing portion and action items from the public hearing on approved replating of Lot 11 and Lot 12 of Jamaica Beach, Section 23, and combining them into one property, known as 16616 San Piper Road, Jamaica Beach, Texas, 77554.
They hear you.
The legal description is abstract 121 Holland Jones Survey, Lot 11, Jamaica Beach, Section 23 of Gauston County, Texas, according to the official public records of the property of Gauston County, Texas. Abstract 121 Holland Jones Survey, Lot 12, Jamaica Beach, Section 23 of Gauston County, Texas, according to the official public records of the property of Gauston County, Texas. Robert, would you like to?
Sure. The application was published in the Gauston County Journal of News and the public newspaper with general circulation, notices were sent to the property owners, and then the 200 feet of the property, additional notice of this meeting was posted in Jamaica Beach City Hall, Jamaica Beach City Internet website, in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. Planning and zoning commission held a public meeting on Thursday, October the 9th, 2023, at 5:30 PM, the application was presented for discussion and passed again, was voted by the planning and zoning commission. Staffs recommend the Jamaica Beach City Council to approve the replat.
Okay, do I have any discussion on the replat? Oh, sorry, any comments from the public on replating of this, of these two lots into one? Yep, okay, any comments from council on the replat? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, I haven't got it.
Oh, okay.
I haven't got it reviewed, I just got this at 4:00 this afternoon. You guys have had time to review?
Yeah, this is good.
The planning is known as approved, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussions? Do I have a motion to approve the replating of Lot 11 and Lot 12 of Jamaica Beach, Section 23, and combining them into one property?
I'll make a motion to approve replating Lot 11 and 12 of Jamaica Beach, Section 23, combining them into one property known as 16616 San Piper Road, Jamaica Beach, Texas, 77554.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, we've got to have a real call on this one.
Oh, okay.
Purvis?
Outstanding.
Welch?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Magdrick?
Yes.
You have it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a reminder that on Saturday night, we have our National Night Out and our Trunk or Treat event on, this Saturday night, 5:07, so bring your golf carts out, and let's give the kiddies a bunch of treats, and I know that both Sandy Genby, who organized the event, and Gina Rennick, who is working really hard at putting it on, are ready to throw a great event with lots of, lots of prizes and games for the kids, and then I know that Chief Garibay has an outstanding National Night Out program, lots of guests are coming, and the fire department will be present, too, so please come out, Alderman Green is in charge of hot dogs, so you can take us, as a plus or a minus, but he's cooking hot dogs for all of us as well, so, so please come out and join us, and then?
Mayor?
Yes?
Give me this public comment.
I did? Nope, thank you. Okay, let's go to public comments, and there's a lot of them today. Mr. Harris, are you on the phone?
We're having problems with the phone. It keeps hanging up.
It'll say it joins, and then it says it left, and it won't keep on calling. It tells you it joined the conference, and then it tells you it left the conference, and it hangs up on you.
Okay. All right, we'll see if he...
He's now joining, joining, he'll now join the conference.
I'm trying to think of a way we could...
Do you have his number?
Yep. All right, his number is, you just want to try calling him direct?
Walter.
Is now joining the conference.
Martin.
His number?
Yes, Robin Harris.
Robin Harris?
Yeah, thank y'all for calling me, I was watching you online, but I couldn't get in.
Yeah, we were having problems with the phone. You are next to speak, or the first to speak on the public comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Bauer and the council, this is regarding the proposed occupancy limit on short-term rentals, many homeowners in the community who responsibly rent our homes, such as myself, are in favor of reasonable restrictions to ensure that rentals are not a disruption to the community, but the proposed occupancy limit is two people per bedroom plus two additional guests, and we feel that's extremely restrictive, and just as an example, under those limits, I would not be able to invite my brother and his wife and their children to join me and my wife and our children, we have three, and they have two, and that would exceed that occupancy limit, and so under that, it does not prevent a party house, that limits the bare use and purpose of a family vacation home, and I do want to mention this occupancy requirement would apply to all homeowners in the community, not just short-term rental owners and guests, so I ask that if the council chooses to create this occupancy limit, at a minimum, they allow two guests per, plus an additional four guests, this is only a difference of two guests, but makes a huge difference for families and usability of all of our homes, and would still achieve the purpose, which I do understand, of deterring the bad actors who are disrupting the community, and that's all, thank you, and thank you for calling me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Robin. Okay.
Still comments?
So we all has comments. Next on the list is David Dillman. And David, yeah, if you would, if you would state your name and your address, please.
David Dillman, 1670 Pine Captain Hook, been a resident of this city for 23 years. So, I've seen a lot of changes in 23 years in this city, look, there's always been rentals, okay, Jamaica Beach has always had beach rentals, right, when I was in high school, I rented a beach house for prom, so, but, but back then, it was always, you went to a realtor, the realtor met you face-to-face when you rented the property, you pick up the keys from the realtor, the realtor came and checked it out, now with the cell phones and the advent of the internet, you rent these houses out to whoever you want to, because it's all going over a telephone, nobody knows who they are, they're not visiting, a lot of these houses, you don't know what goes on, you don't know if there's drug dealing going on in there, you don't know if there's human trafficking going on, our block, we have a house on our block that was actually like, three bedrooms, two baths, and it sleeps 16 people, it's like, how do you do that? And they built downstairs out without any kind of permits, they just started putting bedrooms downstairs, the man that just spoke, Robert Harris, he owns a house on Amperway, he actually purchased my mother's house and converted it into an STR, but he is a real estate investor, okay, and what he said was, when he said that, oh, well, I'm not going to be able to have family over, well, yeah, you can, because you're not renting it out. I'm a charter boat captain by trade, my boat, look, I bought my boat outright, right, it's a personal boat, but I have regulations that I have to abide with, with the United States Coast Guard, that's different than a person with a pleasure boat, and STRs are a business, whether they want to save or not, and they come, they're going to come to you, the people that are pro-STRs will say, well, we contribute to hot tax, but in truth, they don't want to pay that hot tax, they'd rather put that money in their pocket, they're not renting homes for the hot tax to give to the city, that's not why they're doing it, they do it because it's a business, and they're making money on it, so I think it needs to be treated as a business, I read over the regu, the, you know, the regulations that you have set forth, I think they're spot on with limiting it to 22, I think that's plenty, because a lot of these homes are less than a thousand square feet, and if you put any more in there, you're just asking for a disaster, all it takes is one fire to where they cannot get out, because there's only one way up in those of these houses, and one way down, so I think you're doing good, I think it's about time that it take over again for residents that have made their, you know, made this their home, it's time to take that, and not let the STRs go.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next up to speak is Amanda Martinez.
I wanted to speak during open discussion.
Oh, okay, you didn't have to sign up then.
Okay.
During open discussion, we'll just roundtable talk. All right, next up is Erin Rennick.
Please state your name and your address. Erin Rennick, churned at Way 16506, longtime listener, first time caller. Hi, thank you for the time, this is Mayor Alderman, nice to see you, I feel that we are a city in crisis, I've been a full-time resident of Jamaica Beach for seven years, and during this time, I've seen and been witness to the steady erosion of our way of life, residents are steadily departing and are replaced with STR ownership, we have currently 1,340 properties in Jamaica Beach, and 285 of those are recorded STRs, which, doing the math, is 21%, and in my book, that's a saturation point, what is a saturation point? It's the stage in which no more of something can be absorbed or accepted, we're there, there's no longer a sense of community, because we have transient individuals entering and exiting every week from our community, the saturation point, the result of which drives down prices, if you can't fill the space, you drive down the price to encourage more people, most of which are undesirables, unfortunately, it also creates advertising of higher occupancy than is necessary on the rental websites, which additionally encourages frat party behavior, additional noise, trash, it's a safety issue, we have vehicles lining our streets, it also discourages new residents to buy here, who wants to buy a brand-new home in a great beach community next to a frat house, not me, if I wanted to do that, I would have bought an apartment above the nightclub. Speaking of safety, 295, that's the number of shootings that have occurred in the state of Texas at STRs since 2019, it's resulted in 127 deaths, 282 serious injuries, this is a result of overcapacity, it's a result of not raising prices, trying to fill these spaces, additionally, there's no vetting process, we have no idea if these people that are moving in and out of our neighborhood are felons, sex offenders, there could be human trafficking going on without our knowledge. Now, everyone, I know we can't eliminate these STRs completely, but there must be guardrails, must be guardrails, so tonight, Alderman, my fellow residents, my brothers and sisters of Jamaica Beach, your city needs you, ordinance 2023-1, don't just consider it, it's for the welfare of the community, find the fortitude to pass it, vote on it, thank you very much.
Okay, next with citizens' comment is Mr. Paul Wynn.
Well, I'm not going to talk about charter rentals, I agree with what was being said, but that's not why I'm here tonight, you and Ms. Jones and Mr. Phil, all ran on saying that we needed a city manager to run our city, and people voted for you thinking that we needed a city manager, you all, you spent, three of you, $100,000 annual salary, and up to $150,000 annual salary for a city manager to run our little city of thousands of people, plus we're going to spend another 15,000 or so for somebody to recruit a city manager, on top of that, you're going to spend another 50,000 to 75,000 dollars for a city secretary, because your new city manager is not going to be a city coordinator like Robert is, and a city secretary, so you're going to have money on top of that stretch, we already, in your budget of next year, you're spending over a million dollars for salary, total, or I don't tell, of a budget of 2.8 million dollars, now maybe that seems awfully expensive, the 2.8 million dollars of a million of that is going towards salaries, in total, with benefits of your tuition, so I'm just passing it on for people to know exactly what you are proposing to spend for city managers, which I feel like we do not need.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Ginger Jones.
Ginger Jones, 16612, I worked on the last STR committee, and I liked some of the things that you have done, I do, Amy Rollow Ward has, I wanted to know if the lawyer has looked over it, because the occupancy, we talked about during our committee meetings, and we were kind of told that there was litigation about that, and also, how are we going to enforce the number of people in a rental property? Also, where do the fees for the, not the initial registration, but the renewals for the basic, those go into the budget, and now I want to remind everybody, come vote!
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next on the list is Mr. Brandon McDermott.
Brandon McDermott, 16527, John Davis Room, I'm going to have to read this, hi, my name is Brandon McDermott, I'm not sure how many of us there are in Jamaica Beach, but I'm probably one of few that was born, raised, and still live here today, I've been here for 45 years, and I'm 45 years old, my parents lived here, my grandparents lived here until they passed away, my grandpa owned 70s groceries back in the 60s, and my uncle and mom still run it today, and my wife and I are raising kids here today, I love this place, and as our family is growing, I've been looking for a slightly larger house for us to fit in, but I'm on the house buying sites a lot, you know, 90% of the ads on those sites say, they say, this house is a relaxing golf cart ride to the beach, and is a perfect, and it's perfect for a short-term rental income property, heck, some even go on to say how downstairs could even be converted to add additional bedrooms to fit more guests, is that what Jamaica Beach is now, an ad selling perfect short-term rental income properties to lure in people who have no intention of actually living here, I sure own that, this neighborhood that we all love is at a crossroads, and it's time to decide if we want to be a transient short-term rental home for people who live many miles, and sometimes many states away, to buy up our property, fill it with as many guests as possible, turning over every three days, to exploit what we all love about this place and call it home, for what, financial gain? Most of them don't have a, I shouldn't say most, a lot of them don't have a care in the world, how it affects residents that live here full and part-time, or, we want to pass this ordinance tonight, adopt the 2+2 STR occupancy limit, and actually enforce it, so that we can stop outsiders from buying houses just to convert garages and closets, bedrooms, taking as many people as possible in it, let's turn the ship around, keep Jamaica Beach what it has always been, what it's supposed to be, and what it can be again, and that's a beautiful, safe community for residents who actually want to live here, raise a family, enjoy the beach, be neighborly and want to know that you call this place home, let's pass this ordinance tonight, so realtors can draw up the perfect short-term rental property line from their website, and replace it with a relaxing golf cart ride to the beach, and a safe, calm, and wonderful place to raise the family, I beg y'all to consider this tonight, pass it tonight, and let's get this thing started.
Yes, Esther, can you read, we had an email sent from Ms. Andrea Sperry, and due to the difficulty of calling in tonight, and she's, she's indicated challenges in the past, so if you could please read her email, or her comments about tonight.
It's in my personal community. Karen, I am a resident of Jamaica Beach, residing at 16617 Jamaica Beach Road, for the past five years or so, I rent my house out parkland, I plan on calling in tonight's meeting, but I'm also aware that there have been issues with calling speakers in the past, in light of this, I thought I would put my concerns in writing, just to cover my basis, regarding ordinance 2023-10, Section 6, page 6, addresses water activation and deactivation, in preparation of last spring's hard freeze, we were able to call the city and have them turn off our weather, water at the street, this was done to minimize water loss and property damage due to frozen pipes, the same contractor then came back out to turn the water back on after their prolonged freeze was over, according to the wording in the ordinance, this would cost me $250 each time someone from the city came to turn the water on or off, also, if a house has a visible leak, based on this ordinance, the city would bill the homeowner various amounts of money, depending on the time of day of the leak, is this correct? Did I not see any wording that addresses weather or leaks, is it a possibility to put in an emergency contract that would address these instances? Regarding ordinance 2023-11, under definitions, the ordinance lists the maximum occupancy as two people per bedroom plus two additional people, I have several questions here, how is it legal to put a maximum occupancy on an STR, but not an owner-offered home, I have a large bunk room in my four-bedroom home, with a full, over-full bunk and futon, when my family comes, we all use the available beds, how is someone to know that it is me, the homeowner, in the house and not a renter, and does this occupancy limit have a lower age limit, if a family rents my house and has three children under six, do they count the same as over 18? Under STR operations requirements, I also have a few questions, part A, certificate refers to a certificate to be posted on the back of the front door, all exterior doors of my home are glass, as written, this ordinance would put me in violation, and I could be fined up to $500 for every day I don't know, excuse me, I don't somehow post something on my expensive glass door, blocking my beachfront views, perhaps the wording could be changed to, in the case of glass doors, the Jamaica Beach STR registration certificate will be posted in proximity to the main door, I am assuming the city is looking to have a certificate similar to what is seen on the back of hotel doors, all these are standardized within hotel businesses, will the JV certificate be in a PDF form available online to be completed with permanent information, otherwise, there will be no consistency with how the information Otherwise, there will be no consistency with how the information is posted. How am I to get a QR code to the city's website and order the ordinance?
All right, that's, uh, that's all the public comments we had tonight. I'll move to announcements, and I passed one since I've already made it. And then for the second announcement, a reminder that at the next meeting on November ninth, uh, we are going to be recognizing our Korean vets in honor of Veterans Day, which is November eleventh. And, um, and so if you know anyone that is a Korean vet, uh, please, please call the city and let us know of them. We've reached out to several folks and identified just one so far. So if you guys know of anybody, please let us know. Uh, okay, because it's the second meeting of the month, we actually have no reports from the directors. Police are fired. And, uh, next is the consent agenda and approval of minutes. So, um, do we have any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? I guess we should motion to discuss, but, uh, because it's a consent agenda item. Do I have motion to, pardon?
Motion to motion to be approved. I moved, we approved, um, the minutes for the regular city council meeting of ten, twelve, twenty-twenty.
Do I have a second?
I'll cycle it.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting on ten, twelve, twenty-twenty-three? Woody? Okay. Okay, Robert, did you get the vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, comments, reports from members of council? Alderman Towns?
Um, thank you, ma'am. Last month, I called our Congressman Randy Weber's office asking for help with the broken USPS drop-off box by the mail boxes. A new USPS drop-off box was installed yesterday. Today, I emailed them and said, "Brandy," sorry, Brady Burnet, and Jared Vargas from Randy Weber's office for their help." And again, about Veterans Day. "In times of conflict and in times of peace, the men and women of the U.S. forces have dedicated themselves to protecting our freedom, our ideals, our security, and our way of life for generations. As a Gold Star family, our family understands that sacrifice. The City of Jamaica Beach invites our Korean veterans for a special presentation to honor and thank you for your service on Thursday, November ninth during our city council meeting. If you are or know a Korean veteran who lives in Jamaica Beach, please contact City Hall, um, four-zero-nine-seven-three-seven-one-one-four-two." Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
I don't have a report.
Alderman Mouch?
Vote.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Rupertus?
Never reported.
All right. Alderman Green?
Uh, time for I-bomb.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, is, uh, new business. So first item on the agenda is discuss consideration and take action to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-ten, an ordinance of the City of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amending ordinance twenty-nineteen-dash-nine, water and sewer system rates and charges. As amended, to revise and provide for an increase in the rates and fees to be charged for water and sewer system services, providing for the repeal of all of parts of ordinance in conflict here with making various findings and provisions related to the subject and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I make a motion to re-approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, we talked about this ordinance last time, the basis for the need approval. I guess in, in, um, a bit of answering to Ms. Sperring's comments about charges, um, we are gonna be putting out notices to all residents, reminding them that preseason is coming, and if you're not present to either get to know your neighbors real well, or, uh, go to write your home before you depart. The weather service is pretty good at letting us know when cold weather's coming. It did cost the city a inordinate amount of money last year to have our contractor go around and close water lines and open them back up. And so, as the ordinance is, yes, there's a proposed fee for the, the need to provide, uh, one-on-one services to individuals. You know, will we, will we have folks out helping? Yeah, we will. But, uh, you know, citizens need to be aware that their houses are at risk of freezing and need to take proper precautions. Anyway, but we did go over the rates. I've not had much additional feedback or, or, or any comments about the ordinance. So we've opened it up for discussion. Would anybody like to further comment on the new rate proposals, which include water, sewer, and it also is presented last time by the volunteer fire department? There is also a proposal to increase the voluntary rate, uh, for your contribution on your water bill for the fire department is seven dollars and EMS of ten. It's currently four and one.
Seven and three, you said seven and ten.
Oh, seven and three, which is ten.
Yes.
Thank you. So, uh, once again, that is voluntary, and with the call to the city, you can increase it, decrease it, or remove it. Do we have any other discussion on approving this ordinance? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve, um, ordinance number twenty-three-dash-ten?
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance as stated.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, all in favor? Okay, Robert, did you get the unanimous vote?
I got it.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and take action to approve, uh, ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-dash-eleven, an ordinance of the City of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amending the regulations and permitting requirements for operation of short-term rental within the city, providing a penalty for violations and providing for an effective date. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, I do have a very quick, um, uh, PowerPoint. So, I apologize, this isn't my computer, so, uh, it's a little different here. Anyway, this is just the high-level overview for you folks. I realize reading ordinances can be boring and sometimes a bit tedious. So, um, just kind of an effort to, first of all, a little bit of history. Hotel and occupancy tax was first approved for Jamaica Beach in November of nineteen-seventy-nine. It established our hotel motel tax at four percent. Uh, we strengthened that ordinance in, uh, in nineteen-ninety-seven, raised the hotel occupancy tax to seven percent. And it also has stronger language about that the city can audit, and, uh, and it restated penalties associated with not paying that tax. And in two-thousand-and-three, um, we raised our hotel motel tax to nine percent. That's the current hot percent. That's what STRs are supposed to pay us on a, uh, on every rental that they conduct in your homes.
On top of the six percent that they're, that just be set to the state.
That's right, six percent goes to the state. And, uh, and then, whoops, and then in twenty-twenty-one, uh, we passed a short-term rental regulation and registration requirements. It basically just, it makes you registered and says you have to provide contact information for that short-term rental.
And there was a fifty-dollar?
Fifty-dollar registration fee. That actually was never collected. Anyway, uh, so the purpose of this new ordinance is it replaces the old ordinance in its entirety. It establishes regulations for the use of privately owned dwellings, uh, to, to meet the best interest of the citizens of Jamaica Beach. It's enforcement will minimize negative impacts that transient occupants have on surrounding properties, uh, and permanent occupants, and ensures the collection and payment of the hot tax. It improves the short-term rental process by providing for annual updates of information, uh, so that we can know who the owners are and we can know who the required contact person is. It also, because of the occupancy limits, helps safeguard the life, health, safety, welfare, and property of the occupants of residential dwellings being used as the short-term rentals, along with the neighborhood of said occupants and the general public. The new registration process, as it's currently stated in the ordinance, uh, there's an application form and a non-refundable application fee at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The maximum occupancy currently proposed is two persons per qualified bedroom plus two additional persons. A qualified bedroom is that's, is a bedroom that is in a recognized GCAD area. So, uh, anyway, it has to be on GCAD, it has to be in GCAD's living space. You have to be paying taxes on that GCAD living space. And then the, the, uh, ordinance requires you to provide a sketch of how your bedrooms are laid out, uh, within that GCAD documented living space. The owners required, uh, to agree to operate the short-term rental in compliance with all the laws and ordinances of the state of Jamaica Beach. They're required to acknowledge and agree to provide specific written notice to guests. And then, um, after the fees are paid, a registration number will be given. So just an overview, if you're a current registered STR owner, uh, you have to put in a new application form, uh, to update the information, as well as acknowledge all the requirements of the new ordinance, um, which they know of before. It's just we've got it written out in more detailed a way now about all the different ordinances that, that can apply to a rental. There is, there will be, like I said, no two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee if the existing registered STR owners have completed the form and, uh, and the city has received it within sixty days of passage of this ordinance. Current registered owners, uh, that's to sixty days, um, starting on January first, twenty-twenty-five, existing registered owners will also be required to start paying the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar annual operating fee. Both the application fee and the annual operating fee, Ginger, in response to your question, uh, those will go into the general budget and, and will be used, uh, as its budget annually by city council. So they will go into, to general funds, not having to be captured and documented and tracked as to a legal hotel motel tax expenditure. Yes. Yes. Short-term rental registration numbers, uh, to your right to rent, they can expire or be revoked with change of ownership. So if you sell the house, your rental number doesn't go with the house. The new owner would be required to come in, submit an application, uh, get approved, and, and then be issued a rental registration number. If your occupancy tax payments are not made within six months of a verified rental, uh, your permit can be revoked. If the annual operating fee is not received within sixty days of the due date, it can be revoked. If there are violations of our hot tax ordinances or this ordinance, your short-term rental can be revoked for six months, and after the six months, you have to, to reapply. From an operational basis, uh, the city will provide a registration certificate, and it must be posted on back of the front door of the rental home. Of course, if it's a glass door, there will be, uh...
There are gonna be some small things that can be adjusted for.
Yes. Registration number and maximum occupancy must be listed in all advertising mediums. The maximum occupancy must be included in any rental agreement that the owner has with the renter. And, uh, the operator shall post the following outside the house, um, the short-term rental unit registration number, as well as the local contact, uh, twenty-four-hour telephone number. As was in the last ordinance, our, it's the same in this one. You're required, as a short-term rental owner, to provide a twenty-four-hour contact number, and that person has to be able to respond via phone or in person within sixty minutes to help address any issues that might be occurring at that, at that rental. So, um, let's see. Then, uh, every twelve months, the owner must update the application form and, and pay the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar annual operation fee. And once again, if it's not received, the registration number will expire. So, um, anyway, that's kind of an overview of the ordinance. There's more detail than that in there, but these are the high-level points. And, uh, at this point, we'll open it up for discussion with, um, with folks in the audience, and, uh, and then we'll come back to talk a little more at council. So do we have any comments? Yes, Mr. McDermott?
Ralph McDermott, six-seven-one-five, Sandpiper. I was just wondering how we're gonna enforce the ordinance?
Well, as Chief Garrett May will tell you, we can't go count heads in beds. It's not legal to go, to go into a home without a valid reason and warrants to go in. But we can, we can troll the rental sites. And if you're advertising a higher occupancy, then that's a finable offense, uh, and a violation of our ordinance. So, uh, yes, we cannot, we cannot go in and count, like we call it, heads in beds. But we can look at what owners are advertising. And, and this gives us the ability to, to find them when they do that. All right, other comments? Discussion? Yes, Ms. Jones?
Ginger Jones, one, excuse me, one-six-six-one-two, Pearly. My question is if, I'm, I'm a little mixed up on the two-hundred-and-fifty. If they just started there, say, this summer, would they have to pay it again in January, or would they pay it again in next summer when their le, theirs runs out?
So in discussions with our new STR clerk, uh, we talked about would we prorate and then make it on an annual basis? And, uh, and the clerk's input was, let's just roll it. So if you have a current registration, uh, you, you got off scot-free, you didn't have to pay a registration number unless you come in in the last month. But you don't have to pay the application fee if you have an existing number.
Till next year.
Until that time when they expire.
You'll never pay an application fee again if you're already registered. There is an annual operating fee, uh, which helps cover the cost of what it costs to maintain and ensure compliance with our rental requirements, as well as tracking best we can to make sure people pay. So the annual operating fee, if, when this ordinance gets approved, then a new person comes in, fills out the application, pays the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. It takes us a few days to approve it. We have to go through our methods and make sure that they haven't been sliding under the radar and renting it without proper registration, once, and verify their GCAD information. So once we do that and they get a number, then they pay the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar annual operating fee and they receive a registration number. For a new person, that annual registration, that annual operating fee will be every twelve months.
From when they start.
From when they started. For people who have existing numbers, the annual operating fee, as proposed in this ordinance, would be January first of twenty-twenty-five. And then the, the lump of those currently... And then the lump of those, currently about 280 registered owners, every January 1st, they would be required to pay that annual operating fee. Did that answer your questions, Ginger?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, I believe we had a comment in the back?
I have a few questions. Tara Hannan, 16535 Francis Street. First thing I heard, we have an STR committee I wasn't aware of, so I'm curious how we can learn more about that. Is there somewhere on the website or something?
There was a- on this committee? There was an STR committee formed back in 2018. No, 20, yeah, it was all the way back to 2018, wasn't it?
Is there one current?
2019. And it was a committee and they had a discussion.
All right, how can I join? All right.
Yes, it's on in effect now.
You can be the pepper.
I'm starting up, sure, if I'm allowed a couple of questions as I was listening. I'm curious, how was the 2 plus 2 decided? And how was that determined? Was there an assessment or a study done or something to show that there would be a positive impact with adding a 2 plus 2 regulation?
So in lots of discussions with legal and in also reviewing other cities. So there's a, there's a list of cities that we've got that had enacted a 2 plus 2. It also lines up with, yeah, I mean, Kima has it, Ronsples has it, San Marcos has it, Fredericksburg has it, Freeport has it, Mariposa has it. Rockport is in proposal, they discussed it this week at their council meeting. And, anyway.
That gives me a good idea. I was just curious of whether, does someone just say, hey, that sounds like a good idea? Or others, that's great. So I was curious to find what the assessment was of the impact. So I've heard a few people say the same thing in regards to supporting this with things like STRs possibly attracting drinking, human trafficking, and things like that. So I'm curious, have we had any of that in Jamaica Beach?
Not that we know of.
Well, okay, so the police, okay, so nothing, these are just concerns?
Police report is issued every month.
Yeah, I've observed use where they deal, I don't know. You know, I would assume one leads to another, so they had to buy them somewhere.
So drug use. And I'm asking these just together.
Sure.
I'm not for or against.
I like it.
So I'm just curious, you know, I heard that as a strong argument, like, you know, these drug deals from trafficking, I thought, ma'am, am I missing something? Is something going on in Jamaica Beach I'm not aware of? We just don't want it to start happening.
Right.
Right, and so, but is there a correlation between?
Yeah, I mean, even with a quick, even with a quick Google search online in the state of Texas, I mean, when I was citing the shootings, for example, you can Google that and all the data's there.
There's a lot of shootings outside of STRs, that's a whole other.
Sure.
Okay.
We don't want them to start here.
Yeah, well, not STR related.
There was just one at Point West. They sort of rented a house here in Jamaica Beach.
Okay, any other?
That's it for me, thank you.
Comments, questions to council? Okay, I'm going to go back behind you, Daryl.
Kelly Villiot, 4225 Jolly Roger Road. I just have a quick question. The ordinance pretty much specifies, it speaks very clearly about privately owned STRs. Can you give me an example of a not privately owned STR? Is that like the Beach Fox ones?
Corporations.
No, it, it, is that an LLC owned one? It applies that if it's, it just means that it is.
Well, that's what I'm asking is if there's a group of investors that buy a home and rent it, does it still apply to them?
Yes.
How, if it's not privately owned anymore?
Very LLC is responsible.
Yeah, but is that private?
No.
It is, it's considered a person.
Yeah, you just don't know, just curious.
Okay, no, that's a good, Kelly. I guess it means not city-owned or government-owned because a corporation can be a private corporation as well. I think it means it's not owned-
Not publicly traded?
No, it means that it's not owned by a governmental entity. So it's a private entity, a private citizen, and a corporation or an LLC is still not public in the sense that it's a government entity. So when you go and read our zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance also lists that there's exceptions for churches providing like dormitory space. And so privately here is saying it's not a governmental entity and that we don't allow dormitory-style accommodations. But it does cover like the church where they do have dormitory-style sleeping arrangements. So, okay, Mr. Idle, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Are all the fees, are they due at one time, the first year or something?
The application fee is due upon making application if you're a new entity to register your home. And then the annual operating fee, if you're new, is due at the time you would get a number, a registration number and a permit to operate. But then on January 1st of 2025, for existing STR owners, they would be required to pay the $250 annual operating fee.
I was just trying to see if they could be legalized in place or since your staff being hit all the once. All that stuff, they wait to distribute it amongst the year.
Daryl Idle, I'm sorry, Daryl Idle, can you state your address, Daryl?
1675 Montegoway.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Hotel Decker, 1675.
Montegoway. Yes, Mr. Man?
Yeah, sure. How many have 16531 matched though? Is there a lot of houses in our community right now that are not paying short-term rentals that are being rented out as short-term rentals that we don't look?
We are in the process of looking at that more closely.
How are you going to determine that?
Well, right now, we have a tool, Host Compliance, and they have software that goes out and looks at all the advertising media. I think they troll 70 sites. And they come up with a list of STR activity in our neighborhood and provide that for us. And what they can show is, when they will point that out, you know, we can go to the site then, Airbnb, VRBO, and look at how many dates are blocked off in the future and we can make estimates of it.
But if you just personally own your house and you want to rent it out to somebody, we don't pay a short-term rental at that time, what you're saying? A person that owns a house and says, well, I'm going to rent it out for three months here, I'm going to rent it out for a week here, and they never register it, so we don't collect any money on that house, what you're saying?
No.
Shouldn't you?
But we should, what you're saying?
What, it should?
But that's happening, that's what I'm saying, basically, right?
Yes, we have, we have some belief that we have houses that are being rented and they are not registered and they are not compliant.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if y'all were aware of that or whether y'all are tracking that somehow or another.
Yeah, and we are working on how we can improve our oversight.
And may I mention that short-term rentals are any rentals that are 28 days or less?
30 days.
30?
30 or less.
So anything that's a long-term rental doesn't have to pay hot tax. So anything over 30 days wouldn't be paying hot tax or collecting hot tax to give it to the city and to the state.
Okay, so do we have any other citizen comments in that?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez, please state your name, address.
I'm Hannah Martinez, 16701 Captain Hook. I wanted to talk about the illegal build-outs that we keep seeing everywhere. I put in extensive research to figure out how these investment companies have such high occupancy numbers. In my research, I found that homes with the highest number of people have done so by building out the downstairs and adding bedrooms in what used to be garages. I have a list of 20 homes done within the last three years. These are not only illegal, they're also untaxed and unsafe. There is no reason any company should be renting out the downstairs if the home was built after 1975. This ordinance will help our city to stop these illegal build-outs so the rental properties can no longer keep profiting from them. That's all.
Thank you. All right, hang on, she raised her hands for us, Daryl.
Ginger Jones, 16612 Curlew. This is probably not what people want to hear, but is there any way that we can prevent more? I know the ones that are already here, okay, but prevent more from coming into our neighborhood, our city?
We are in discussions. I don't know if anything can be done or not. There's still legislative-
At least you're looking into it. Thank you.
Anyway, there are cities that are banning them right now. But it's usually done through an HOA. Galveston, Galveston has approached it from a different perspective. They have what's called their R-not zoning, R-zero. And, you know, our zoning ordinance doesn't have that right now. So in Galveston, you can go as a area and get so many people to agree that you want no more STRs and take it forward to their planning and zoning commission first to get your area zoned as an R-zero. It takes petitions, it takes a lot of legwork. That's what Galveston is doing. To look at limiting STRs where the community is feeling it's a major negative impact to their, to the pleasure of their living in that area.
It would help, the realtors would help us with this.
It's out there, Ginger. I don't know if or how we're going to be able to progress at this time.
Well, you're looking into it, so that satisfies me. Thank you.
Aaron Renick, 16506, trade that way again. Just a quick question, you know, assuming that this is going to be voted on at pass the night fingers props. How would we go about informing the STR owners of the new ordinance and move forward from there? How would you communicate that?
Well, when you say the new STR owners, if they are currently registered, we should have updated information on their contact information. And so, yes, letters will go out, emails will go out and lots of updates on the website. You know, most of those aren't registered in Blackboard for that form of communication. But yes, they've been required to keep their information current. We don't know if that's been done or not, but we are, by ordinance, supposed to have current contact information on that.
In there.
All right, any other comments? No? Okay, I'm going to open it up for council discussion. And just a little more, we have been in extensive conversations with legal. Legal states that current, the way our ordinance is written and they've helped us draft it, they feel it's defendable. Will they tell us we're not going to get a lawsuit? No, they won't guarantee that we won't get a lawsuit. What they do say is that they believe the way our ordinance is written, that it satisfies the points of law that would allow us to win if we were sued. On the occupancy limits, that's kind of along the same. There's been a slight shift in how occupancy limits can be approached and for overall safety and well-being, I forget the exact terms, but the rational basis of application of constitutional law, they feel it meets those criteria. So there has been a slight shift over the last three years, especially as communities have been more or less crying out that the STRs in some locations and instances are changing the fabric of their neighborhoods and the enjoyment of their life. So that's where legal stands on it. So, you know, hence we drafted the ordinance and looking at how we would move this forward. So what other? Wendy, any discussions?
There are a few things that people brought up that you said that needs to be tweaked. You know, should we, you know, get all that tweaked before we pass it? I mean, it just seems to me that we ought to look at it real good to where, you know, we're all good with what we're doing before we have something that's going to have to come back any.
I spent, you know, last night in the apartment this morning to read through this. I only found one thing that I did think about, so congratulations. The only thing I came about was maximum occupancy. And I get the 2 plus 2 overnight, but if I'm renting a home and I want to invite some friends over and, you know, I send them home, say, at a reasonable hour, that seems to be a little draconian, I guess, or a little old-bell. Right, so if this maximum occupancy was set for, say, nine to nine for two nights and 10 to 7 on Saturday or Sunday, I think that would be, I think that's a reasonable thing that folks could do. You know, if they want to have somebody, if they're friends over for dinner or-
And I see not, I see not sending people out in need brigades. You know, if you invite somebody over for dinner and then you don't think they can drive home, you know, what do you do? Oh, no, you gotta go.
What do they do to restaurants?
Here again, the enforcement point of this is about what they're advertising. And what they're stating, I mean, we really can't enforce it other ways. I can't go in and, and I'm not a rental agency. Some of the rental agencies in town, they hire GARM. GARM is a local entity that many very reputable rental agencies in our area use. And if you rent with these people, you sign a deal that says you agree to be evicted if you have violated these sections of the ordinance and they used GARM to do that. But as a city, we don't really have the right to do that. So I-
So maximum occupancy should read the maximum of advertised maximum occupancy?
That's, that's.
I don't know, I think it's a, I mean, that's why we're having these discussions. It is- I don't, I don't- That's about it. I, yeah, we'll open up, we've got some comments here. Ms. Taber?
I think occupancy refers to how many beds are provided for people to sleep overnight, not how many people are congregating for an event during the day or dinner. It's how many people you're going to sleep in that house overnight. That's kind of the way with legal terminology.
Thanks, Danny.
I'm understanding your perspective.
How many, what is the, what's the national average for the fire department?
Fire code states residential occupancy is one person per 200 square feet. And so in conversations with our fire chief, it was our acting fire marshal under kind of an emergency situation. You know, the one per 200. And of course, needless to say, he has great concerns of that, the level of occupancy we have at many of our homes. And, you know, when he shows up- And, you know, when he shows up, uh, he, he'd like more.
People's there.
He'd like more confidence that, that the people in that house can actually get out. So, but, but the National Fire Code is one per two hundred. So, um, for, for those of you that don't have a calculator right at your hand for a thousand square foot home, that would be an occupancy of five. Uh, and that is National Fire Code, which we adopted the twenty eighteen, uh, which is the latest version of that fire code. I forget exactly which ordinance we adopted it in, but, uh, Russell, what do y'all might remember? Anyway, it hasn't been adopted. Did I see any, okay, so the, the occupancy issue, if you're doing.
Yeah, um, I don't know your name, but what you brought up about the occupancy and sleeping, look. You can, you, it's the same thing as renting a hotel. You go to a hotel room and you rent a hotel room and you bring fifteen people up into your hotel room, they're probably gonna kick you out. So it's the same thing. Somebody rents a house and there's an occupancy of six and they wanna throw a party and there's gonna be twenty-five people in there, that's when us, as residents, take control and they go, hey, look, this isn't right, you call the police. And then let the police supervise. I mean, is it gonna happen? Absolutely. People are gonna rent a house and they're gonna throw a party. But there has to be some type of control that needs to be implemented now before we go into the new year. I mean, this needs to start now. It's just been absolutely out of control here in Jamaica Beach. And in a lot of other cities and, you know, and speaking about, I mean, some people go like, she brought up drug trafficking and human trafficking. There was a big case that happened, I believe, in New Mexico that they were actually trafficking people out of an STR. And they caught, so does it happen? Cause there's no vending process on who these people are that rent these homes. So, I mean, it needs to start, it needs to start now.
Yes, Wendy?
Uh, with all due respect, I think the concern for if the guests of a rent house are able to invite as many people over if they want during the day is misplaced. I think the concern should be, what are the people that live next door to that house have to put up with if they do that? So I think the number should be, the two plus two, I think, is fair. And I think what you said, that being beds, is very appropriate. Obviously, if they have some people over, that's gonna happen, but I don't think the consideration should be on behalf of the guest, it should be on behalf of the residents.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
If, if you wanna have a party and it's two plus two, rent two houses or three houses. They don't have to put them all in one.
Or rent the park, it's empty all the time.
Yeah, amen. Great idea.
Okay, any other, any other comments or discussion from council? Um, I've heard two comments that we should, uh, vet it further.
I mean, I don't wanna be the guy.
Don't.
But, uh, you know, if we're gonna do it, we gotta get it right first.
No.
I mean, that's. Just right first. I'm really, really careful.
Yeah.
If each of y'all would test the reason. I don't, what do you think is right?
I mean, yeah, it's what y'all brought up. I mean, the placement of the, of the, of the, of the.
Upon the.
Occupancy thing or whatever. I mean, I don't know, I was just listening to Shor.
Well, we, we go in past it, with the understanding that we'll amend it to satisfy that requirement, that need, if necessary.
If it becomes a problem, we can amend the ordinance.
Yes, sir, we can amend it right here at this table.
The council's.
We don't wanna hang it up over moving a piece of paper over.
The council's talking around that.
You know, we've been, uh, we have the short-term rental committee, we went through it. I went to every meeting and watched, uh, you, Sharon, Ginger, you were on it. I'm trying to think of other people who were there all the time to those meetings. That, that started in two thousand eighteen and continued through COVID with emails and stuff. Then we passed one short-term rental that actually hasn't been enforced well. So now we have this, so we have been tweaking it. And if we have to tweak it more, then we'll, we'll amend it. But right now, I think it's, it's time, this has been cleared by legal. I think it's a good idea to, to go ahead.
Yes, Mr.?
My question is, you say the two per bedroom, I understand that. But what if you're having people over to dinner and you have, say, you can sleep eight, but they're not spending the night, they're just coming to dinner? You're not talking about that, are you? Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
No, it's, it's, it's about the promotion of how many beds you're going to provide to.
Overnight.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure I was thinking right.
So, do I, do I have a motion to approve or a motion?
Commander Mayor, I make a motion to approve, um, let's see, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven. An ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amending the regulations and permitting requirements for operating a short-term rental within the city, providing a penalty for violations and providing for an effective date.
So what's gonna be the effective date? Should that be discussed and had with the motion?
I believe the, the date is sixty days after it's been approved.
No, it's, the effective date's now.
Sixty?
Well, the, 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 the effective date is now, but people have sixty days to provide us the new application form. And then effective today, if someone comes into Marrow to, uh, register, it, it will be under the new process.
Would you like me to read it again and add the effective date?
I mean, it's in the ordinance.
I will actually clarify it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second. Do I have a vote? All in, um, all in favor of approving the ordinance? And, uh, and thank you citizens of Jamaica Beach. All right, let me, give me one second.
I can ask you one thing, please?
Yes.
I just wanna commend you all sitting up there and having guts to do this. Because you are going to walk around with a bull tie on your backside and.
And a crown.
We got you guys.
We all got you, uh, this. I commend y'all for doing this.
Okay, all right, next on the agenda is mayor's report. I think I stated last time, we have an update from the search committee, uh, that we have eighteen applicants, nine of which meet our minimum qualifications. We, as a, just to kind of give a heads up, at the next meeting, I will be requesting from council that we hold a special meeting, uh, on the exact date to be determined, it'll be the week after Thanksgiving. Um, I, it'll, don't know if it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday yet, uh, but y'all can let me know which of those dates were best for you. That will be to bring in the screened candidates. So the plan is that they would come in, meet with staff, and then, uh, we would introduce them to the public and then go into executive session to actually interview the three or four candidates brought forward. The base highlight list station is progressing. We're gonna put a, a nice black coating, mount a nice fence around it, uh, which will be visually more, more pleasant. And, as I said, we've been working really hard on this STR ordinance and gonna be bringing more things forward in the near future. And I appreciate all of you and all the council. So that's the end of my mayor's reports. And, uh, now, we're not doing an executive session tonight, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.